The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
So with that, I'll open it up to the council for any comments.
Madam Chair, who submitted the petition? Was it the Police Department?
I think it was the Chief, right?
Yes. Okay. So, the other part too, just for a point of information, there's no other handicapped access, to my knowledge.
Right.
So this is pretty critical. You're talking about state representative, the congressman, you also have some court things happening, but a lot of school department things happening, so it may be, I think, I feel comfortable with moving forward with it tonight.
I think for the most part, we all agree, unless there would be a circumstance that we're not aware of. Any other comments from the...
Just that, well, it's just that it's gotta go through a couple of readings anyway, so if something comes up in the interim, we get a shot, correct it.
Okay. All right, with that, I will go to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of 52-18, please come to the podium. Again, if there's anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this petition?
No, no, no.
On this one. For the third and last time, if there's anyone who wishes to speak in support of the handicapped parking space on Church Street, please come to the podium. If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing no objection, I'll continue the hearing for the next meeting, or do we have a preference to close it?
I'm okay with closing it, moving forward tonight.
Okay. So, Mr. President, we'll close the hearing.
Very good, thank you.
matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items you wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first thing we'll do is we'll go right through the list for the people that signed up, and then there will be an opportunity for anyone else to speak that has not signed up as well. The first person, I believe, Janet Poltney. Again, if you can just restate your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, this is Janet Shara Poltney, and I reside at 36 Burridge Avenue with my husband Ralph and my dog Jake, and I want to thank you for allowing us to talk about the petition for the speed bumps on Burridge Ave. due to the very high speed that people travel down from either Main Street or Pierce Street. We all accept the fact that we have to have the cut-through, the shortcut, it's been there for many, many years. I've lived on Burridge Ave. for 14 years, and I also lived on Main Street when I was growing up, so I know that that has always been a cut-through, and we, like I say, we have to accept that. The thing that concerns me and all of the residents here is how fast cars continue to fly down that hill. We have every kind of sign, children's signs, speed limits, blind driveways, and everything you could imagine, but it doesn't stop the vehicles from flying down the hill. Speaking just for myself, I've pulled out of my driveway and almost got clipped so many times, I can't even describe it, in the short 14 years I've lived on Burridge Avenue. Also, it just kinda freaks me out that now we have like very small children in the neighborhood. I have a lady across the street with a newborn, and she's got a little toddler, and the other day, a car was coming down so fast, her little guy started to run towards the road, she almost dropped her baby. I mean, it's unbelievable, people do not even look, and due to the road conditions, oftentimes people are coming down the hill, they're staying right in the middle of the road up from Main Street, so it's always a hazard, and it seems to me, I mean, children should be able to come out of their house, it's very, it's residential, it's thickly settled, they should be able to take their bike up the street, they should be able to walk up to their school bus without being frightened, and I just think I would really appreciate if you could give a lot of consideration to this. And I will add, even beyond the rush hour times, I have come out of my house with my dog and thinking, oh, nothing's coming, there's not a backup on Main Street, and all of a sudden, someone will come down, I've had to jump out of the way. People are looking down at their cellphones, they're coming down, they just, everybody's harried there, everybody's in a rush, but we feel that a way to remedy the situation would be speed bumps. We think that would be the only way, not an officer for a couple days, or one of those blinking signs, because it doesn't have a long-term effect. And, you know, one other thing, I've actually had a car in front of Kathy at my house come down from Pierce Street, believe it or not, and his car flipped over right in front of my house. So you gotta say to yourself, I mean, are we going too fast, is it safe for the children, is it safe for any of us to pull out of our driveways? Us, as adults, people with their children, trying to, you know, go out to work. So again, I know that other people would like to speak, so I really would like you to give consideration to our petition, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, Ralph Poltney.
Yes, I'm Janet's husband Ralph Poltney, of 36 Burridge Ave. as well, and, I mean, my wife said pretty much everything, but I think the biggest thing is there are eight children that live within the first six houses coming down from Main Street, four of which just moved into our neighborhood. I mean, we personally have drive like your kids live here, sign-on lawns, but it really doesn't help. There has been police presence in the past, they had the speed sign up the road, which it almost seems like some people want to see how fast they're going, which is well above what the speed limit of 30 miles an hour is indicated, and in my opinion, as well as most of our neighbors, 30 miles an hour in that area is too fast. There's too many driveways, there's no sidewalks, there is one blind driveway that is extremely dangerous, and they also have a five-year-old child that lives at that residence as well. And I know years back, there were speed bumps at the other end of Burridge Ave., up near Pierce Street, but I feel, as most of our neighbors do, that we really need speed bumps coming down the hill from Main Street. The road is in terrible condition, that doesn't even deter them. In fact, a safety hazard on that is people going up the hill to Main Street will avoid all those ruts, so they're on the wrong side of the road. You come around, excuse me, from Main Street onto Burridge Ave., a lot of times, there is a vehicle on your side of the road, because they're avoiding those ruts. I just hope that, you know, you really take this situation into consideration and help us out, we need some help. I guess, I had some photos, but for you, for those of you who have never been on Burridge Ave., take a ride by sometime and see the conditions. So, I guess that's all I have to say, and I, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next scheduled speaker, Dan Delaney.
I got a bum knee. My name's Dan Delaney, I live on 130 Pierce Streets, and I moved to Leominster a year ago, and I'm grateful to be in Leominster, and we have a whole bunch of wonderful neighbors in the street, and that traffic is really terrible. They come, I'm up on one end of Pierce Street, they come up my street, they went right across my yard and knocked the stop sign down, and then I called the town to put the stop sign back, and they never came, so I dug the hole down and I bolted the sign. So if the guy comes now, he's gonna have trouble. But, you know, I backed out over the Ron's house across the way, tried to come back, and this car comes flying by, you can't, you have to, they don't care about anybody. And we got another guy that comes by there once in a while, he's coming so fast, we yell at him, and I think one time, they threw some ice at Ralph, and the guy just stepped on the gas and just go, they go right through the stop sign, they don't even stop. And generally, most of the problem is during the time that I notice between 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock, they use that road a lot to come by. And the other thing is that, you know, I have my little grandson with me today, his name is Hunter, and we got another little guy here named Hunter. He's the guy that lives right coming down the hill, that's where that house is, and you can't see him. And I've come down there a number of times to watch how I would come down to be able to see, and you, I mean, if I'm going 5 miles an hour, and got right to their driveway, and this kid come out, you'd whack him, and they're coming down the street 40 miles an hour. And so anyways, that's one of the things I wanted to cite, that this young boy is there, and that they're coming up the street and they knock the stop signs down. The other thing, this is Burridge Ave., and out on Simpson Road, I mean, not Simpson Road, that's where I used to live. Out on Pierce Street, you go by my house, and up a few, maybe 200 yards or 500 yards, they get speed bumps, and then after you go over one speed bump, you go another 100 yards, there's another speed bump, and if they, they fly out there in front of my house. And if they're going that fast out there, and they're doing the same thing on my road, then we should have speed bumps, or something to deter these people from speed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next scheduled speaker, Patrick McCarty.
Hi, good evening, Patrick McCarty, 816 Pleasant Street, here in Leominster. Here to speak tonight in favor of petition 85-18, which is Greenbrier Realty Trust is requesting that the council grant an easement. Back in 2006, we prepared site plans for two, two-unit townhomes at 72 Cottage Street. We received site plan approval on March 7th of 2006. Condition number two of that site plan approval is to request the granting of this easement. At the rear of 72 Cottage Street, there is a town, city-owned piece of property that, you know, appears on a plan as if it was the extension of South Cotton Street that never got built, and there's a 16-inch city water main in that, so our plans, which have been reviewed and approved by the DPW, show the connection of these water services, domestic water services, to the 16-inch water main, and also a new 6-inch line to provide hydrant fire protection service to this proposed development. So we're just here tonight to speak in favor, and hope that the council acts favorably. It's, I know it's been a long time, 12 years since we did the site plans, it's nice to see that the project has legs again, and hope that the council can support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick, thank you. Is it Sarah Wilcox?
Good evening, Sarah Wilcox, 95 Burridge Avenue, to revisit.
You can, you can just mention Burridge Ave.
Okay. So regarding the speed bumps, I think that for us, we moved into Leominster two years ago, and part of the issue is really safety. We have an aging population in our neighborhood, they walk their dogs multiple times a day. I see students getting off the bus, walking with no sidewalks, and I have seen many, many times, people flying up and down the street, and I think really, it's just a safety concern at this point, and I'd just like to support that petition and hope that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Jackie Edmonds.
Hello, I'm Jacqueline Edmonds, and I reside at 27 Burridge Ave., and I believe I'm the longest resident of Burridge on the street. So, I'm gonna back you up a little bit. For when I was a little girl, Burridge, we used to play frisbee right out in front of my house. We slid down the hill, that was our sliding hill, we skateboarded, we roller skated, we banged caps in the street, played four-square, and the people that had, that came down the hill, they had the respect and tolerance to let us move out of the street. They waited for us to move. So things, we aged, I'm in high school, my high school years, things started to change, more traffic in the area, it was harder to get out onto Route 13, which led to more traffic coming down the cutoff road of Burridge. So our family started actually going out to Prospect Street and going out to the lights, instead of being able to just go right up our hill and go out onto Route 13. Mary Jane Simmons, at the time, looked for a change, she made it a one-way street, because she noticed how fast the traffic and how much traffic our, our street was collecting. With opposition, of course, that didn't last. So, the years went on, we started a family, we continued to tolerate the traffic, but noticed that the respect and tolerance of other people had really, really dwindled. I was a home daycare provider from 1997 to 2013, I'd walk down the street with a double carriage, with either a baby on me, a baby on my back, four toddlers hanging on, whatever combination through those years that you would see me at. No respect, no tolerance from the cars coming down the hill, they'd still whiz right by us, and this is while I was walking, I had to walk my daycare children down to walk my boys to their bus stop at the time. So this wasn't a choice, it was either let my boys out to the wolves, or walk with them to make sure they were safe, and we were all safe. Dave Rollins was instrumental, working with our family, for getting us two signs up at the top of our street, plus moving the 30 mile an hour sign down to the bottom of the hill, it was originally up at the top of Burridge Hill. So, I would like to take the time to invite you to go, maybe not at rush hour or anything like that, maybe when we're all in bed, or, go up to the top of Burridge, go 30 miles an hour down that hill, and I would, I think that you would really see what we're trying, the point we're trying to get across here. So times changed again, but now the neighborhood's changed. People are on their cellphones, there's little respect, little tolerance, especially at rush hours, when they're stuck on Route 13, and they're looking for a way out. Now there's eight young children in that very small area down at the bottom of Burridge Hill, and we do live in that house with the blind drive, so we literally take our life in our hands, we wait at the, we wait at the end of our driveway, we look up, and since Burridge Road, Burridge Ave. is so narrow, we have to look up, then start to pull out, make sure we look down, just in case, because a car isn't gonna be able to pass us by the time we get our car all the way out, and then look up again and hope nobody's coming, so. And then, I'd also like to, with the times changing, we've been passed on our street, people don't feel like we're doing the speed limit when we're, you know, trying to get up from zero to supposedly the 30. We've had a car flip in front of our house, we also, we have our youngest, one of our youngest members of Burridge, and actually on their hill, with a car going up Burridge one night, took a chunk out of their hill from, and left car parts everywhere, and probably almost flipped. So, I ask that you really, really take this into consideration. I invite you down, you can sit in our driveway for a while, and just watch the cars go up and down. Of course, it's summertime, you've got people on vacation and whatnot, school year is horrendous, and that's the most part of the year, but sit there for a while, and again, go at the top of Burridge Hill and go down 30 miles an hour, and I hope that will change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. It is the policy and law that we begin session at 7:30, so we're right around that time right now. We're gonna go into session, then we'll recess, and we'll go back to the public forum, so if you haven't had a chance to speak, you certainly will have that opportunity. The regular scheduled meeting for July 9th, 2018 is now in session, please stand and join me in a salute to the flag. We'll begin with the roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Adinger.
Present.
Councilor Bonanza.
Present.
Councilor Shale Fozefer.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
I am also present, we have two that are not here this evening, Councilor Feckley is ill, as well as Councilor Dombrowski, that was unable to attend. We will not have records tonight, because the Vice President is not here, so we'll work with them the next meeting. Do I have a motion for recess?
Second.
Second, thank you. We're now in recess. We'll go back to the public forum. Again, if, with all due respect, if you can try to keep your comments to around two minutes, we'd appreciate it, so everyone has a chance to speak. The next speaker is Brian Wilcox.
Hi, I'm Brian Wilcox, 95 Burridge Ave., and I'm just supporting this bill with the speed bumps. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Tim Fletcher.
Hello. I've lived there my whole life, 45 years, I grew up at 73 Burridge Ave., I now own that property, I built the house at 49 Watson Ave., which is directly in the backyard. 1983, I was hit by a car, riding my bike on that road. I now have had one hip replacement from that accident, and I have to have another. I've lost countless animals, growing up because of this, people fly down the road, they do, they do not care about us, they do not care about what goes on. It happens between the rush hour traffic, between the morning and the afternoon. We had an SUV a few years ago, took the corner from Burridge going to Crystal Ave., too fast, road was a little wet, lost control, ruined 80 feet of my property, almost hit my house. Cops came out, a person was cited, nothing happened. Again, I ask you, please, put in the, put in the speed bumps, somebody is going to get killed. I have lost time and effort, and I've lost years from having to wait for a hip replacement. I now can walk again, and I walk around the neighborhood at night. I don't want somebody to get killed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, Mark Bernard.
Hi, good evening, Mark Bernard, 102 Burridge Avenue, lived there for the last 10 years, been a lifelong Leominster resident. I'm in support of the speed bumps as well, I live on the end, closer to Pierce Street, I've seen many times where cars just come flying by, and it's not only during rush hour, it's even in the evenings, I've, don't know how many cars just literally fly right by, and I've actually seen a car forget that there's a stop sign at the end of the road, and almost take out a brick wall in front of a house, so it's, it's pretty bad. Safety concerns amongst all the kids that are in the neighborhood, my wife Gina, actually periodically will walk some of the kids to the bus stop, just so that, you know, peace of mind that everybody else is safe, so, you know, I look to you guys to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. The next speaker, Al Hood.
Al Hood, 32 Burridge Ave., been there about four years with my girlfriend, and I've always gone down that road, even when I didn't live there, but it's gotten considerably worse in the last two or three years. One other problem we got, I know everybody's already talked about the safety issues with the cars and everything, but we need to have somebody come up there with a brush cutter on the hill, on the right-hand side, in front of Jackie and Kevin's house, and take and cut that back, so they can see backing out of the driveway, and that people can see coming down the hill. The other thing is, the canopy of trees in that area has overgrown that street so bad, that it's like a dungeon at the top of the hill. Nobody cuts the trees, the line people don't come up and do it anymore, the telephone people don't do it, it's just, that's part of the problem with the street. So what I'm talking about is mainly DPW work or whatever, the street is in horrible condition, I mean, it's just, we look at all the streets that are getting taken and redone around here, including Willow Street, which shocked me, you know, it just, we need to have some work done up there, and we've tried to call, Ralph's called, myself has called, I worked for a contractor for years, I know what it should be like, but it's not like that, and it hasn't been touched in, in years, so, thank you.
Al, is the, the problem with the brush at 27 Burridge, in that area?
It's on the, when you make, when you make the left off of Main Street coming from, say, Whalen Park.
Yeah.
It's on the right-hand side going down the hill, when you, when you take the steep hill coming down, that's right in front of Jackie's, or just above Jackie's house, between a house that is right up there on Main Street, but that, it's bad, and I mean, they, they haven't cut that since... haven't cut that since I've been living there, so.
We'll get, the DPW will be requested through the mayor's office tomorrow morning.
Okay. And the trees, too.
Yeah.
You know?
If anybody takes a ride up there, you'll see what it's like.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Would any other member of the audience like to address the council on any matter before the council that has not signed up? Second time? Sir?
My name is Oben O'Kazimia. So I moved Lummister a few months ago. So I'm here, I have four kids, but I'm here to support the petition from, thank you.
Sir, what is your address?
That we, Mascoma Ave, Lummister.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
I'd just like to say that his driveways are on Burridge Ave, even though he lives on the corner of, okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Any other member of the audience like to address the council?
My name is Lori Bateman, and I live at 66 Watson Ave, which is the road parallel to Burridge Ave. And I just want to say that I'm in support of this as well. I have a young granddaughter and a dog that we walk that road, and it is really hazardous. Someone's going to get killed. It's going to be an animal or a little kid that runs out. But before that happens, please take action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Again, would anyone else like to address the council on any matter?
Hi, I'm Chelsea Jones. We're at 22 Burridge Ave, and we're the last house on the street, right? So right where the hill gets really bad. And this little girl can't play out front. And my oldest daughter runs the neighborhood every morning, and it scares me every time she leaves. So I support it.
Thank you very much.
You support it? Yes.
Thank you. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second call, and a third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Okay, we're going to begin with communications from the mayor. We have some appointed appointments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. The first is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Sandra Murphy to the Position of Disability Commission, term to expire April 15, 2021.
The candidate is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means, and tonight we have the clerk here filling in.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. Refer, I don't need a referral. I just wanted to make a correction, though. It's Sandra. I'm sure you know that. The recommendation is for regular course.
Okay, thank you. Regular course on Sandra Murphy. The next candidate?
The next is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of James LeBlanc to perform the duties of the Emergency Management Director on a temporary basis for 60 days until the office can be filled by a permanent appointment.
The candidate is referred to, again, the clerk for Ways and Means.
Again, regular course. I think the council knows both these people pretty well. I don't think it's necessary to have them come in for an interview.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, good. All right, thank you very much. We now have communications from the mayor, beginning with Communication 1.
C-1. Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella requests that the city council approve petition C-1 and authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation substantially in the form as set forth below relating to the city making payment on a certain unpaid bill to Royal Steam Heater Co., provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court and provided further that the mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
C-01 is referred to the clerk of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with referrals to the purchasing agent, school department, mayor, city solicitor, comptroller. I put school department in there because I think we all have an idea. It's with the schools. But I think we, we should have an explanation as to what was done without having the authority to pay for it so that we have a better idea when we're voting.
All set? Okay, thank you. So Communication 1 is to begin with regular course with referral to the purchase, purchasing agent, school department, the mayor, the comptroller, and also the city solicitor. We're all set? Okay, good. Counselor Adinger, you okay?
I'm fine, sorry.
All right, thank you. No, no, please. Okay, thank you. I will now move on to orders, beginning with Communication 02.
C-2. Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $255,711 be made to the fiscal year 2019 insurance expense account, same to be transferred from the worker compensation less funds.
Communication 2 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, however, it should be amended to read workers' compensation loss funds.
Loss funds instead of less?
Yeah, instead of less funds.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to amend that right now. We have a motion to amend it?
So.
Okay, second it, counselor. All those in favor of amending it? Those opposed? Thank you. It has been amended. And, and we just have regular course on that?
Regular course, please, yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, Communication 2 has been given regular course. We now move on to petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with 1-19.
1-19. Janet L. Scherr-Poltney and 10 registered voters request speed bumps to be installed on Barrage Ave.
1-19 is referred again to the acting chair of Legal Affairs.
Regular course with referral to the police department, city solicitor, mayor, DPW. Is there anyone else that the council wishes to refer this to? Okay, with that said, um.
I think, well, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. 1-19 has been given regular course with referral to the police department, the city solicitor, the mayor's office, and the DPW. We now move on to matters before the city council. We'll begin with the City of Lummister financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Relative to free cash, as you know, it was certified at $9,732,293 for the prior fiscal year. We spent all but $4,936 of that account, which was closed out, and which will show up in next year's free cash at some point. Relative to the stabilization fund, we began the year, fiscal year on July 1 with $15,080,719, and there's been no appropriations from that amount thus far.
Thank you very much. Now move on to Communication 84. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. C-84, relative to the appropriation of $64,696 to the cemetery salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. We have a letter from the mayor requesting this money, and it breaks down for a laborer, $33,693, a part-time clerk, $16,457, and part-time summer help to maintain the cemetery of $14,546 for the total amount of the requested appropriation. Those monies were requested by Raymond Racine, director of, of our Public Works Department, to cover the fiscal 2019 funds necessary to operate the cemetery. I can tell the council that the current balance of the perpetual care account stands at $1,053,627.10. It would be my position to grant C-84. Mr. President, I'd ask you to check with my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I'm in agreement.
Third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I disagree.
Okay. Qualify your recommendation, please.
Yes, Count, Mr. Mr. President, it is the report from Finance to grant C-84.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 84. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to one, Communication 84 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order to the sum of $64,696 be appropriated to the cemetery salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, their recommendation read. Are there any comments on the floor or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, Communication 84 has been granted. I have my number right here, six to one. Okay, thank you. We now move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Legal Affairs, and the acting chair tonight is Counselor Frida. We have Communication 79. Are you ready to report?
How is the bridesmaid here? C-79. Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella requests authorization to file a home rule petition as follows. An act authorizing the City of Lummister to amend the Special Act of 2002 relative to retired officer detail. And I will read this into the record. Dear members of the city council, I hereby request the authorization to file a home rule petition provided as follows. An act authorizing the City of Lummister to amend the Special Act 2002 relative to retired officer detail. Be it enacted, do you want me to read all of this now? I should into this part of the record.
I believe you have to.
Yes.
If you don't mind, stick your time.
Nope.
Thank you.
Be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1. The mayor of the City of Lummister may appoint at the recommendation of the police chief and as the police chief deems necessary, retired police officers of the City of Lummister as special police officers to perform police traffic details. The retired Lummister police officers shall have regular police officers in the City of Lummister and retired based on superannuation. No retired officer shall be appointed or continue to be employed as a special police officer after attaining the age of seven years. Seventy years. I get a stamp right over that. Before being appointed pursuant to this act, a retired officer shall pass a medical examination conducted by a physician or other certified professional chosen by the city to determine whether the retired officer is performing the essential duties of a special police officer pursuant to this act, the cost of which shall be borne by the retired officer. Proof of payment of that cost shall be a prerequisite of employment. Assigned essential duties form provided by the chief of police shall be presented by the designated city physician or certified professional as a prerequisite of employment. Section 2. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall not be subject to Chapter 31, Section 99A of Chapter 41 or Chapter 150E of the general laws. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall not be eligible for special leave, vacation, or any other benefits of a full-time, regular employee of the City of Lummister. Section 3. A special police officer shall, when performing traffic details, have the same power to make arrests and perform other police functions as a regular police officer of the City of Lummister. Section 4. A special police officer shall be appointed for a one-year term, subject to removal by the mayor or the chief of police upon written notice. Section 5. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall be subject to the rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and requirements imposed by the chief of police and the mayor of the City of Lummister, including, but not limited to, I restrictions on the type of detailed assignments. 2. Requirements regarding medical examinations to determine continuing capability to perform the duties of a special police officer. 3. Requirements for training. 4. Requirement for first days certification and qualifications. 5. Requirements for firearms licensing and qualifications. 6. Requirements regarding uniform and equipment. 7. Execution of an employee agreement developed by the chief of police. A special police officer's compliance with the rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and requirements shall be at no cost to the City of Lummister. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall not be subject to Section 96B of Chapter 41 of the general laws. Section 6. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall be sworn before the city council of the City of Lummister, who shall keep a record of the appointment. Section 7. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall be subject to Sections 100 and 111F of Chapter 41 of the general laws. The amount payable pursuant to said Section 111F of said Chapter 41 shall be calculated by averaging the amount earned during the preceding 52 weeks as a special police officer working police details, so by averaging that amount over a lesser period of time for an officer designated as a special police officer fewer than 52 weeks before the incapacity. Payment pursuant to said Section 111F of said Chapter 41 shall not exceed in a calendar year, the limitations on earnings contained in Paragraph B of Section 91, Chapter 32 of the general laws. Payment pursuant to said Section 111F of said Chapter 41 shall terminate in accordance with said Section 111F of said Chapter 41 on when a special police officer appointed pursuant to this act reaches the age of 70, whichever occurs first. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall not be subject to Section 85H or 85H and a half of Chapter 32 or eligible for benefits pursuant to those sections. Section 8. Appointment as a special police officer should not entitle the appointee to assignment due a detail. Section 9. A special police officer appointed pursuant to this act shall be subject to the limitations on hours worked and earnings restrictions in Paragraph B of Section 91 of Chapter 32 of the general laws. Section 10. Special police officers shall attend an annual in-service training program approved by the municipal police training committee. The in-service training shall include, but not limited, to recertification of CPR and first responder training. Special officers shall attend any other training deemed necessary by the chief of police. This may include field training with regular full-time officers of the department. All training shall be at no cost to the City of Lummister. Section 11. This act shall take effect upon its passage. Notation, in deference to the Act 2002, Chapter 296, any current retired officer over the age of 70 shall be allowed to continue as a special police officer for the purposes enumerated and in accordance with them until the last day of December in the year they attain the age of 72. If you have any questions, please contact my office at any time. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor.
Thank you.
The referrals were to the police, which I believe are as part of this, and the solicitor. And we have both back? We don't?
No.
Only the police? Okay. So the recommendation would be for further time?
Okay. All set?
Yeah, I'm all set with that. Counselor, do you know who wrote this?
I thought it was the chief for some reason, and I don't know why.
Just curious. But I'm, I'm okay with further time.
Okay. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing, further time. Thank you. We now have Petition 79-18. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, I think. 79-18. David R. Cormier installed a stop sign on Sawtell Road against eastbound drivers at Central Street. We referred these to the DPW and the police? And we got responses back? No. Who are we not getting them back from? The police?
We referred it to Dr.
Is that all of them? We didn't get anything back?
If there's no objection, take my block, sure. So we're going to take 79 through 83?
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three. If there's no objection but from the council? Okay, counsel, if you can just re-read the first one, if you can go 80-18 through 83.
80-18. David R. Cormier installed a stop sign on Litchfield Street against northbound drivers at Lancaster Street. 81-18. David R. Cormier installed a stop sign on Tossie Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. 82-18. David R. Cormier installed a stop sign on Columbus Street against westbound drivers at Litchfield Street. 83-18. David R. Cormier installed a stop sign on Columbus Street against eastbound drivers at Route Street. Without the referrals back, the recommendation again will be further time.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation for further time on 79- Counselors heard the recommendation for further time on seventy-nine-eighteen through eighty-three-eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Further time has been awarded. Thank you, Counselor. We now move on to eighty-four-eighteen. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am. Eighty-four-eighteen is Interim Chief Michael D. Goldman. I amend Chapter ten of the Lummester Peddler's License as authorized by Master General Law Chapter six, Section one seventy-two B and a half.
Stick your time.
It's not as bad as it looks. His application's on here. To the Honorable City Council, the undersigned petition, Your Honorable body, to add is ten-three-point-one, the following: In accordance with Master General Law, Chapter six, Section one seventy-two B and a half, to obtain a state license to peddle, you must submit: One, a completed application for license to peddle; Two, fingerprints for purposes of conducting FBI records at state and national criminal history records check; Three, this process pertains to out-of-state resident license applicants; Four, information obtained through the FBI Civil Fingerprint Records Check System will not be disseminated to unauthorized entities. Petition was submitted by Michael Goldman. And this is to the Honorable City Council from Lummester Police Department dated June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regarding proposal to adopt a civil fingerprint ordinance in the City of Lummester. As of last fall, there was a change in regulations at the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services, restricting law enforcement from running a person through the triple-three system, parentheses, national level as opposed to state, end of parentheses, in order to conduct a background check on persons that reside out of state for reasons other than criminal acts and/or investigations. Individuals that apply through the City Clerk's Office for Massachusetts State Peddler License complete an application form. Copy is attached to this letter. This form requires a Certificate of Character section be signed off on by the Chief of Police of the city or town in which the applicant resides. Under the new DCJIS regulation, the Police Department is prohibited from running an out-of-state application for a permit because it does not rise to the level of a criminal investigation, therefore severely limiting access to information on the background of an out-of-state applicant, thus making the required signature as to one's character impossible to evaluate. Adoption of a civil fingerprint ordinance will allow the Police Department to submit a fingerprint-based National Criminal History Records Check in accordance with Chapter two fifty-six of the Acts of two thousand and ten on an out-of-state applicant for permit purposes. Although this will be a more lengthy application process, it will allow the Chief or his designate to make a factual, informed decision as to the character of the individual seeking the permit. In order for access to the National Criminal History Records Database, the ordinance or bylaws must meet the following requirements. The ordinance must reference the authorizing statute, Master General Law, Chapter six, Section one seventy-two B and a half. The ordinance must require fingerprinting of a licensing application, highlighted require. The ordinance must authorize the use of FBI records to conduct state and national criminal history records check. The ordinance must identify specific categories of licensing applicants to be screened and may not be overly broad in its scope. The ordinance must clearly state that FBI criminal history will not be disseminated to unauthorized entities. The current fee for the state peddler license is sixty-two dollars. Master General Law, Section six, Section one seventy-two B and a half, requires that the municipality deposits thirty dollars per license to the Commonwealth's Firearms, Fingerprinting, Identity Verification Trust Fund. The current fingerprint fee is ten dollars. To cover the above expenses, the new proposed fee is a hundred-two dollars per license. In the event that the ordinance is adopted, it is then required to be submitted to the commanding officer at Mass State Police State Identification Section and the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services for final approval. We also have a copy of the application and information bulleted from the Office of Public Safety, all backing up pretty much what the Chief is telling us. And that was referred to the police and the city solicitor? We obviously have the police. Do we have anything from the city solicitor? No. So this will also be further timed?
I'm fine with that. No problem for the time.
Okay.
Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on eighty-four-eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Okay. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Eighty-four-eighteen has been given further time. Thank you. We now move on to eighty-five-eighteen. Is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Eighty-five-eighteen, Greenbrier Realty Trust requests an easement over the parcels shown on the City of Lummester assessors' maps as map twelve, parcel five, as shown on the utility plan prepared by McCarty Engineering dated December sixteenth, two thousand and five, and revised June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to install four domestic water services and one hydrant service off the city-owned water main. I don't think we got anything back from DPW on that. We did. Okay. Who else did we refer it to?
We referred it to engineer, fire, planning, building, and solicitor, but nothing else has come back.
We don't have any of those except DPW?
No.
Okay. So again, we will have further time.
The wheels of progress are tough during the holiday season when everyone's on vacation. Yeah. All right, Ellen. Okay. So, Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on eighty-five-eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Further time has been awarded. Thank you for filling in. Appreciate it. We're now—nothing into public service tonight. We're now going to move on to page four. We'll deal with public safety and traffic. Counselor Cormier, you're doing a solo tonight with two members not here. Eighty-six-eighteen, are you ready to report?
I am. Eighty-six-eighteen is Gil Feckley. Amend Section thirteen-eighty-eight dot four of Lummester Municipal Code by adding the following: No driver shall make a left-hand turn from Day Street onto the rear driveway of Johnny Appleseed School during the hours of seven AM and nine AM, Monday through Friday, during the school year. We did get a response back from the principal, Meg O'Hern Curran. Hello, I am writing to respond to the petition regarding the left turn from Day Street onto the rear driveway of Johnny Appleseed School. The time in the proposed amendment prohibiting the left turn is seven AM to nine AM. I would propose the following times: seven-thirty AM to eight-thirty AM, and two-thirty PM to three-thirty PM. These times encompass the drop-off and pickup times at the school. It is during these times that individuals who try to take a left turn hold up the regular traffic on the street. So I asked the City Clerk earlier—we did not get anything from the Police Department yet, the Traffic Division, and I certainly would like them to weigh in, you know, on this issue as well before we make any decision. And I also talked to the petitioner and Wood One Counselor, and she really is feeling ill today and regrets that she couldn't be here. So I, out of respect to her as well, this is her petition and her ward, I'd like for her to be able to weigh in on this as well. So, like many of the other petitions before us this evening, I'm going to ask that this be given further time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on eighty-six-eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Further time has been awarded. Mr. Chairman, if you can work with the clerk and make sure the Police Department gets the changes—
Right.
—as recommended by the principal—
Okay.
—for consideration, also the Ward Counselor as well, please.
Okay.
We now have seventy-two-eighteen. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. If there's no objection, I'm going to take these and block seventy-two-eighteen through seventy-eight-eighteen.
Is there any objection? If not, you have the floor.
Okay. Seventy-two-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number ten on Independence Drive. Seventy-three-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number twelve on Bicentennial Avenue. Seventy-four-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number four on Flintlock Drive. Seventy-five-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number five on Bicentennial Avenue. Seventy-six-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number two on Drummer Lane. Seventy-seven-eighteen, David R. Cormier installed a streetlight on pole number four on Indian Ridge Drive. And seventy-eight-eighteen, David R. Cormier requests to install a streetlight on pole number two on Bicentennial Avenue. I was supposed to meet with the mayor today at three o'clock, and this was going to be one of the things I was going to discuss with him, and unfortunately, I got tied up at work and could not get out as early as I hoped. So I am meeting with him on Thursday. And also, we have not gotten—or I have not—the Planning Board has not met again since the last time they talked about this. So I know that the City Clerk typed up some things and sent it over to them, and I'm going to get to their meeting as well, just to clarify what I'm looking for from them to send to the council on this. So, once again, I'm going to ask for further time on seventy-two-eighteen through seventy-eight-eighteen.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on seventy-two-eighteen. In block through seventy-eight-eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Further time has been awarded. Counselor Cormier, when you meet with the mayor, if you can bring back to the council a projected cost per light annually—
Right.
—and, you know, we can assess that through financials—
Okay.
—and see if there's enough money in there, so we don't run into this problem—
Right.
—anytime we want to have a light installed.
Right. I know—that, you know, the initial cost was, you know, laid out for us—
Right.
—but I'm not sure exactly, and I'll find this out—
Okay.
—how much it is per light per year now to run. I think it used to be under National Credit, four hundred dollars, but I think it's significantly less than that now.
It is, about eighty percent less.
Right. Because of the new LED lighting that we have.
Yeah.
So I'll get that information.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We now move on to City Property. We have Counselor Ottinger. Communication fifty-three, you ready to report?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I am. Regarding C fifty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella requested that property known to the assessor's map, three oh two, block one A, and located on Jungle Road be declared surplus. The request for proposal period expired. However, there was one person that was expected to, you know, bid on this, but because of time commitments, they were not able to get their request in. They still are interested in the property, so my suggestion or my report would be for—to table this, and when they're ready to come back for the RFP, we bring it back into the City Council. But I would ask you to poll the committee.
You poll the committee, beginning with the clerk. Counselor Bonanza?
Yeah, I'm good with tabling it.
There, remember, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm fine with that. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, qualify, please.
The recommendation is that we table C fifty-three until we hear back from the Economic Development people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to table C fifty-three. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. C fifty-three has been tabled. Ways and Means of Veterans Affair, I think we're all set on that tonight. Old Business, we have a second reading of an ordinance, formerly Public Service Petition sixty-seven-eighteen, referred to the Chairwoman—excuse me, Chairwoman of Legal Affairs, correct? Okay. So that goes over to Public Service. So that would be Counselor Frida. I didn't mean to do this to you when we selected committees earlier.
As long as everybody knows that this afternoon, everybody got sick, so I had very little time for rehearsal here.
I know. You should take your time with it.
Okay. Second reading of an ordinance relative to accepting Lexington Circle, together with the water line easement as shown on the street acceptance plan in Lummester, Massachusetts, prepared for the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust by Hannigan Engineering Incorporated dated March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We did get back—we were waiting for KP, and we got that back. Dear Ms. Bouchard, you have requested that we review sixty-seven-eighteen, in which Liberty Rental Corporation, as trustee of the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust, the owner, requests the city to lay out and accept Lexington Circle as a public way. The layout of Lexington Circle is shown more particularly a plan entitled, quote, "Street Acceptance Plan in Lummester, Massachusetts," end of quote, dated March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the plan, a paperclip via which was included with the petition. I have reviewed the plan and other materials accompanying Petition sixty-seven-eighteen, namely giraffes of a quitclaim deed, a certificate of trustee, and a certificate of title prepared by the owner's attorney, and based on the foregoing materials, find that the owner has title to Lexington Drive. The trustee's certificate and title certification are in final form. The owner's attorney and I will make a few revisions to the quitclaim deed. I recommend that the city engineer confirm that the street acceptance plan accurately depicts the layout of Lexington Circle as constructed on the ground. Attached, please find an order to be adopted by the City Council, voting to lay out and accept Lexington Circle as a public—and it's a public way, in authorizing the mayor to accept the fee in the roadway and other easements. Once the vote has been taken and document is finalized, please request the mayor to sign the enclosed acceptance of deed and send me the original for recording. Please let me know if you have questions or need additional assistance concerning the matter. Shurant Everett, very truly ours, Shurant Everett. And the order of layout is Lexington—whereas it appears that the public convenience and necessity required to laying out as a public way of Lexington Circle, as shown in a plan, as shown more particularly on a plan of land entitled "Street Acceptance Plan in Lummester, Massachusetts," dated March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Hannigan Engineering Incorporated. Now therefore, be it ordered that Lexington Circle is hereby laid out as a public way, and the mayor is hereby authorized to acquire the necessary land and/or easements of public way and drainage, utility access, and/or related purposes for purchase, gift, or indoor eminent domain, all for nominal consideration, and on such terms as the mayor deems appropriate. In witness whereof, we, the duly elected and qualified city councillors of the City of Lummester, have hereunto set our hands this, I would assume today, two thousand and eighteen. So the recommendation will be to grant?
I want to check with you.
We have the acceptance of deed. Want me to read that as well? That was the—
Same time.
—the layout and the acceptance of deed on this day.
It's all one vote, so go for it.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
The city—this is just the mayor's part. That was our part. This is the mayor's part.
Okay.
The City of Lummester acting by and through its mayor pursuant to the vote of the Lummester City Council on today's date, I would think, a certified copy of which is attached here too, and every other authority appertaining hereby accepts the foregoing quitclaim deed from Liberty Rental Corporation, trustee of the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust, for public ways and water purposes under the provisions of General Law, Chapter eighty-two, Sections twenty-one to twenty-four, in General Law, Chapter forty, Sections thirty-nine B. City of Lummester, Dean J. Mazzarella.
Thank you. Would you like to poll your committee, Counselor?
I did. Counselor Vittian's in a grant. So the recommendation would be to adopt.
Very good. Counselors heard the recommendation to adopt. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
All set? And I shall be recorded, yay, by a seven to nothing vote. It is passed. And we're going to need some signatures on that. Did the other counselors sign it also? Okay. Okay. Very good. Yeah, go ahead. That'd be good. Thank you. A couple of quick items under Old Business.
We still have more on the other page.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm looking at this as being the next thing.
We have two more seconds.
Okay, great. Yep. All right. We'll deal with that afterwards. Okay, we'll go to page five right now. We have a second—
I appreciate the break you offering, but—
Yeah. Give you a little break on that. It was only going to be a quick one. Okay, we have another second reading of the ordinance.
Second reading of an ordinance relative to amending Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinance entitled "Zoning by Amending the Lummester Zoning Map," so that the following parcels are situated in the Residence B zoning district. Pleasant Street, West Side, map four eighty-one lots nineteen and twenty; map five twenty-one lots one and thirty-nine; map four eighty-four lots one, five, six, seven, and eight; map four ninety-four lots eighteen, three A, three one A, three dash two A, three dash two B, and three dash two C. Pleasant Street, East Side, map five sixty-one, lots thirty-five A, thirty-six A, thirty-seven A; map three forty, lots one and two; map four ten, lots one, two, three, four, five, twenty-two, and twenty-three; map four ninety-six, lots one, two, and three; Low Street, map— Low Street, map 488 lot 5, Legal Affairs, petition 14-18. Um, I'll go to Counsel of Danza, but, uh, my recommendation would be to adopt the second reading.
I am in favor.
All right, great. So qualify one more time?
Recommendation is to adopt the second reading.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Schellefus Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of seven to nothing. The second reading has been adopted. Thank you. Probably the reason why, um, Counsel Dombrowski was unable to attend tonight, this would have been his 12th time reading this, because of you, Counsel Cormier. Okay, well now move on.
That's Counsel David Cormier.
David Cormier. We now have, move on to the second reading of an ordinance, formerly petition 52-18. Are you ready to report?
Second reading of an ordinance relative to amending chapter 13, section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces, Creating One Reserve Space in Front of the Gallagher Building, 24 Church Street, Located on Merrim Avenue, Closest to Church Street." Um, we had a public hearing tonight, and the recommendation, uh, we're waiting for one more, but I think we all feel comfortable, uh, with the necessity of that parking space, so I'll go to Counsel of Danza, but the recommendation from me would be to grant.
I'm in accord.
Or to adopt.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Schellefus Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of seven to nothing. The ordinance has been adopted. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you. Nice job. Um, couple items under Old Business.
New business.
I'm still old business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's okay. Um, it, it's been a hectic couple of weeks with the holiday and the transition with the new staff, uh, taking over in the office, so I deeply appreciate Caitlin and T, the assistant clerk as well, you know, for the great work that they did. Um, I fell a little short with trying to put together the piece tonight for Counsel Schellefus Zephyr's request for the Special Presidents Committee, but that'll be on the agenda, uh, calendar for the next.
Sure.
Meeting. I'm just tinkering whether we're going to have three people or four people on there, but we, you, I know you're busy, you want to chair it?
Absolutely.
Okay, cheers. So let me, let me get it together, it'll be on the next calendar.
Okay.
All right. And then, um, I think, uh, the, we're going to put together a list, a comprehensive list for each one of the chairs, um, on every table petition that is outstanding right now, so we're going to have that on the next calendar as well. So, um, what will happen is the clerk and assistant clerk will be putting together a portfolio, if in fact you have anything outstanding in your committees, and we can move forward in a timely fashion. Um, we're at a slower time of the year right now as far as what's been coming down to us, knock on wood, um, after the budget process, and, um, so it might be a good time to get together with your committees, have a subcommittee, contact the petitioners, let them know you're going to be taking action at disposition on their petition out of respect to them if applicable, okay? So those, any other items under Old Business you'd like to bring up right now? Counsel, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I would like to request through the chair that everybody on the council gets copies of the financial reports. I know that Counsel of Danza, who's the finance chair, gets, um, finance reports for each of the meetings, but it would be really helpful if everybody, I think, uh, had copies of the same report.
That's a good idea.
So, thank you.
Yeah, let's do that, okay? We, we did that before, I think, originally. We were all getting them, and they just kind of ended it back on finance, so it's just good to see it, okay? All right, good. Anything else under Old Business? We're good? Okay, well now move on to New Business. We have a first reading of the ordinance. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am. First reading of the ordinance relative to amending Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Lummester Zoning Ordinance to Include Language Regarding Recreation of Marijuana Facility. Um, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading. I'll go to Counsel of Danza.
I'm in accord.
Thank you, all set. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Nay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Schellefus Zephyr.
Nay.
Counsel Frida.
Nay.
Okay. I shall record a j by a vote of, what do we have here, split 3-3?
I can't believe it.
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three vote. Yes, I'm a yay. Okay. Do we need a qualification as to the technical part of that, or we all set?
Well, we know it has to be six votes.
It has to be six. We don't have, um, we don't have the six votes on that for it to be qualified.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Is there any issue with that on the floor? Votes have been taken, let it stand.
Well, you know, if I may, ju.
Go, go ahead.
Just so that it's on, on record.
Right.
Okay. Um, if we could, when we have a full council next, reconsider the vote.
You want to bring that up right now? Madam Clerk, is that correct? We're bringing up a reconsideration for the vote?
The next time we have a full city council.
Okay. Do we vote on reconsideration, or is it coming from an individual council, or is that standing? I believe an individual council stands. Okay?
Okay.
All right, good.
Just so that it's on record, that we will reconsider this vote.
Okay, so it will be reconsidered. Right now, the vote is denied by a four to three vote, okay? Yes, Counselor?
Just to add to that.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to have the city solicitor check that.
Sure.
If we're going to start changing things or reconsidering things because we don't like the way the vote went, because everybody's not here, um, I think we need to consider that too, or we'll be doing that on all the votes.
It, I, I appreciate the comment. Reconsideration is an act of Mason's rules that is allowed, um, and, and the proper way to bring it up is in the meeting itself, and I, I don't disagree with anything that you have said, but we will qualify that with the city solicitor.
I don't disagree, but the comment was made when the full council's here.
Right.
If the full council isn't here next time, we don't want to reconsider it? I mean, are we just reconsidering if the full council's here? I mean, that's, that's, that's my objection.
Your point's well taken. Okay, thank you. We now move on to the first reading of an ordinance, formerly Legal Affairs Petition 62-18. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance relative to amending section 13-77 of the Lummester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southwestbound traffic on Commonwealth Circle at the intersection of Exchange Street. Um, I'll go to Counsel of Danza, but I'm, I'm in, in agreement with adopting the first.
Counsel? Okay, good.
Sure.
Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the, the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Schellefus Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of seven to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. We now move on to the third first reading this evening under New Business. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance relative to amending section 13-77 of the Lummester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northeastbound traffic on Revolution Drive at the intersection of Exchange Street. Again, I'll go to Counsel of Danza with his petition, so my recommendation would be to adopt the first reading.
All set, thank you. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance of Legal Affairs 63-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odenger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Schellefus Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of seven to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. Um, community calendar, what's happening? Um, Counsel, do you have anything on you for the, um, the meeting in Pittsburgh? Could you share that, please?
Yep, thank you very much. That's what I was just about to, um, to raise. So this is, um, a letter to the Lummester City Council from the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, Mayor Dean Atali. May I read the letter?
Please.
Okay.
The public's also invited too, correct?
Yeah, I, well, I'll, I'll read the letter.
It's open, yeah.
Okay. Dear Lummester City Council, I have invited UMass Memorial Healthcare President of Community Hospitals Douglas Brown and UMass Memorial Health Alliance CEO Ms. Deborah Waymoth to meet with municipal, state, and federal elected leaders to express our deep concerns and opposition to the planned closure of the pediatric unit at the Lummester campus, the Burbank Urgent Care Center, and the move of the cardiac rehabilitation department to the Clinton campus. The meeting is scheduled, scheduled for Friday, July 13th at 9:00 a.m. at Pittsburgh State University, 160 Pearl Street in the Hammond Building, conference from 3:14. I hope you will make every effort to attend. Please contact my office at 978-829-1801 to respond as to whether you will be in attendance. Sincerely, Stephen L. Dean Atali, Mayor of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, if we can, um, before Friday, if you plan on attending, if you could contact the clerk's office, and then she'll contact, uh, the mayor to let him know we'll be attending, or who will be attending. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Frida?
I just, in regard to the same thing, just wanted to bring up, uh, the fact that I was at the meeting that we were invited to.
Yeah.
Last Friday, and Counsel Odenger was there as well, and Counsel Feckley was there, and there were a few counselors from, um, Pittsburgh, I think Counsel Donnelly, Counsel Esqualia, and Counsel Boishman, as well as, um, Senate President, uh, Harriet Chandler, um, Hank Norton was there. So there were a number of elected officials listening to, to Deb Waymoth's presentation. Um, and I think, I just think that our issue in Lummester is much different from the, the issue that Pittsburgh's facing. I think they're two distinct.
Okay.
Uh, going back to the days when you and I had been there. So my recommendation was to Deb Waymoth, was to get in touch with you and do a presentation down here for, for the public.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, thank you. That's going to be, um, something that happens in a very timely fashion. I, okay, uh, anything, anything else under, just again, not to breach, um, the open meeting law, any other items under community calendar? Okay, all right, very good. The, are there any other items before the council, we all set? Okay, motion for adjournment? Thank you, second. We're adjourned, thank you. Thank you very much.
The Lummester City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R. Lancaster Street, Lummester, 978-466-1922.